If you can, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is public comments, and we have nobody that's signed up yet. And so, next will be, well, we'll adjourn this meeting and then open up the, uh, the hearing for the bargaining.
Correct.
Be six, we'll just say six thirty-one and six thirty-two.
Yeah, so just a quick description for what we're doing here. Every year, school corporations have to have a public hearing on bargaining, collective bargaining between school corporation and teachers' organization. Has to be done by September fifteenth, so basically it's gonna happen tonight. Casey is gonna make some statements. I might follow up with some things, and then there is a time that if anybody has any public comment on this hearing, you can, you can do that at that time, too. So with that, Casey, it's all yours.
Hi, everybody. I'm Casey Honkam, president of the Monroe Greggs Teachers Association and bargaining chair. I stand before you tonight to share some information as we begin our bargaining season. In the last year, our district has had fifteen teachers leave the district. This is a sixteen percent of our teaching staff. This is an increase from last year, which was just ten percent, but a decrease from the year prior at twenty-five percent. Our ADM in regards to students has been rather consistent, only fluctuating by a small number. Unfortunately, this year, we're anticipating a decrease. These are typically the two main impacts in our budget for bargaining. However, this past year, the legislator has made big changes on how public schools will receive money. This is going to have a significant impact on this bargaining season. While the legislative advertises as a huge savings for taxpayers, they did not share the impact it would have on our schools and students. The loss of approximately a million dollars over the coming years hinders the ability to keep increasing teacher pay as well as keeping the district functioning. This is not just a Monrovia issue, it's an issue for all public schools in Indiana. We know this year and the next few, we will have tight budgets. We entered a good faith bargaining that this district will try its hardest to ensure the funds are available to apply for teacher compensation. As more and more requirements are passed down from the state, teachers are asked to do more with little or no help from the state in form of compensation or funding. Teachers already spend many hours outside of their contractual time to ensure that students get the best education possible. We do it for the kids, as we're so often told. The problem is, there's only so much a teacher can give, and the combination of factors are pushing teachers to the brink. While we may be entering a lean period with finances, teachers understand it's important to look at the whole picture in regards to finances. While we believe compensation for years of experience and degrees earned are a priority to ensure we do not end up hiring new hires that make more than loyal employees, it's also important when asking teachers to take on additional responsibilities outside of teaching, that compensation for those services are also considered. The district can do additional things to show that they support their teachers, the first being respect. Administration and the community respecting the work and sacrifices teachers in this district are making and supporting and acknowledging them. A thank you is always appreciated, but volunteering to help in the school by subbing, helping with events, or just having a conversation with the teacher about how they are doing will speak even louder. Next, teachers need to be part of the process of finding solutions. A district's made up of so many parts, and essential part of this are your teachers. These teachers know how interconnected we are as a district. They know how programs build upon one another and how without one piece, it could all fall apart. When making teachers part of the process and making changes, you give them ownership in the process and the buy-in to make it successful. When they're part of the process of finding solutions, the consequences of hard choices can be much easier to bear. Lastly, teachers need to know there's a plan. For far too long, we've dealt with what comes our way, being reactive instead of proactive. These last few years, each building has been hit differently, some harder than others in loss of positions and programming. With the loss of revenue from property taxes, we know the decisions coming aren't going to get easier. And last year, the district has been sharing more information in regards to school funding and budgets and the details of ours specifically. Discussions have occurred monthly and concerns have been expressed. In uncertain times, more communication is beneficial to reducing fears and rumors. In a district as small as our, information spreads very quickly. We want it to be accurate information. What will make your teachers stay and weather the storm is that there's a clear path that is shared with steps along the way because they know what is happening and the next steps forwards. Unfortunately, none of these items can be negotiated into our contract, but these are the concerns I hear daily from teachers. They want to be respected, heard, and part of the solution. Additional compensation for their hard work and dedication is always appreciated. Many teachers have left for a higher salary in other districts. Many others are considering it, but together, we can give them a reason to persevere and stay, giving our district a chance to come out of this better. This district is the heart of the community, and we need to make sure the educators in it know they are respected and appreciated. We're looking forward to a productive bargaining session this year.
Thanks, Casey. Just, just a few other things, so everybody knows kinda how it works. We cannot formally start bargaining till after September fifteenth, however, you can informally have discussions, talk about, you know, different things. We might do that a little bit with some contract language prior to September fifteenth. More likely, we will not talk about finances and compensation till October first or after because that's the count day, so we know how many students we're, we're gonna have, and that's, gives us the, the funding for, you know, what we can deal with as far as compensation there. As of today, I believe we're at fifteen oh seven is our student count, still down from where we were in February, which was fifteen forty-two. So we got a ways to go before we'd hit that. I don't see us getting there, but we'll see. We still have to October first. And then all the challenges Casey hit on, we all, we know about all those. We've been talking about them a lot, so. I'm looking forward to, like she said, having a productive meetings. It was very productive last year, I think went very well, so look for nothing but the same thing this year.
Are there any public comments on the bargaining? Okay, so we will adjourn that one.
Adjourn that one.
At six thirty-seven. Then we're going to open up the, the bond hearing and resolutions.
Yep.
And that would be six thirty-seven.
Yeah, so for this one, this is the additional appropriation bond hearing and the adoption of resolutions. So what's happened over the past couple of months is we've done all of the advertising we're supposed to do for the issuing of bonds, been in the, the paper, website, posted around the schools. What we're doing is asking to appropriate six million dollars over the next two years. As Monrovia has done for a while now, that money goes toward projects around the school, whether it's routine maintenance that comes up or projects that are decided to, you know, improve the schools, that sort of thing. For example, this year, we're doing roof, we've done the urinal project, and then many other things that just come our way that are kind of emergencies with bond money from the past, so. Tonight is basically just the last, last chance for anybody to have any public comment about what we've done so far, that sort of thing. Let me read just a couple things so everybody understands how this works and what we're doing. So the additional appropriation hearing, the school corporation is funding this project through the issuance of general obligation bonds. The proceeds from this bond issue must be appropriated prior to being spent on the project. Notice that this hearing was advertised in local papers. The additional appropriation resolution, which is Exhibit A. After the additional appropriation hearing, the school board must approve the appropriation of the bond proceeds to be spent on the project costs before any bond money can be expended. Unlike appropriations of tax dollars, this additional appropriation of bond proceeds is not required to be approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. And then the final bond resolution is Exhibit B. This final bond resolution establishes the amount to be borrowed, maximum term of repayment, and maximum interest rate. It also contains the details about the bonds, such as the form of the bond. This resolution also approves the forms of the seventh supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and the registrar and paying agent agreement. The Securities and Exchange Commission requires that a school corporation enter into a master continuing disclosure undertaking before it issues bonds. The school corporation has entered into this type of agreement previously. It basically requires that the school corporation agree to annually provide certain types of financial information to the SEC's Emma database and provide notice of certain material events on a timely basis. So that's basically what's happening tonight, is these, this appropriations hearing where we can hear any public comment, and then the board would vote on both of those resolutions.
Are there any public comments over the, the bond hearing resolutions? At this time, we will still go ahead and close this hearing. Separate six forty. And vote on Exhibit A, the resolution. So do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the additional appropriation resolution.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Elliott, is there any further discussion on Exhibit A? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five to zero. And now on to the final bond resolution, Exhibit B. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the bond resolution Exhibit B? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes five to zero. I guess, well, the original meeting would have started at six forty before those votes, right? We would have had to open back up our original, so that.
Right.
Carpe for the horse, but that was six forty on that. So now moving on to item six, which is the consideration of the minutes from our, uh, board meeting on July fourteenth.
Mr. President, I move that we approve regular and executive session in one motion.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item number seven, consideration of the claims, and we will start with the claims.
Nothing really out of the ordinary this month, claims-wise.
Do I have a motion to approve claims?
I approve claims.
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
I'll second. Are we doing both at the same time? Or just the claims?
I thought we were gonna, my motion was to do it all, both of them at the same time.
That was the.
That, that was first, we're, we're on claims.
Yeah, we're on.
Right.
And we were gonna do.
Sorry.
The minutes and the claims all at the same time?
No, I'm thinking claims and payroll.
Payroll.
You wanna do claims and payroll at the same time? That's what I guess I'm asking if the motion was. Is your motion to, to do both of the claims and difference?
Absolutely, that's a good idea.
Alright.
I'm seconding that.
Mr. Kennedy, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item number eight, consideration of personnel recommendations, starting with the certified.
Yeah, one comment on there. We've, administration's been, still been busy finding different positions that we need. You're gonna see Damon Hyatt recommended there as a business teacher. We're gonna work with him on, he's gonna need to get an emergency permit, and then he's gonna get his transition to teaching licensure. He comes to us from the business world, has a pretty extensive background in finance, some marketing, things like that. So we are happy to make that recommendation there.
Move to approve.
Mr. Elliott?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the certified? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Now classified.
No comments there, it's pretty straightforward.
I'll move to approve the classified.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion on the classified? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And now we're on to ECA.
Yeah, just wanna, first of all, thank everybody on this list that is taking on more duties to, to coach or, um, just be part of kids' lives, really, and all these different, different things here. So wanna say thank you to that first. Do you have some coaching recommendations there that Mr. Regations has made? He's hit the ground running and, and went out and tried to find some people that, that wanna, wanna coach and do a good job for us, so. Really just wanna say thank you to all those people that, like I said, willing to take the time to, to, uh, help kids.
I move to approve the ECA.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Elliott, any further discussion on the ECA?
Is the only addition, the softball coach?
Yeah.
I think that's different than what we were.
Yep, that was the only new one there.
Okay.
And I guess I have a question. I, I know on some of these positions that we hire, we kinda get a little informational sheet on the back. And a lot of positions are people that we know just because they're around. Kinda wonder like with the softball, I mean, who is this? What's their background? I mean, who, who, I guess I don't really know who I'm voting on. Sure, there's probably a great pick, and also kinda, I have been questioned, and I agree that has, was all of the, uh, applicants, especially the ones that had priorly been involved with our softball, coming off of a great season, our head coach moved. I just wanna make sure that they were all included, talked to before, not being told that's not the case, and I do disagree with that. So I, I would like a little more information on who the softball coach is.
Okay, I can definitely follow up with you on that.
Any further discussion?
I don't know a lot about her, Brock, but what I do kinda know is I think she played collegiate softball. I think she's a younger lady. I don't know, you know, if she's got coaching experience or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know on that. I just, uh, a lot happening there with hiring awful quick, especially for a sport that doesn't start till later on. I just kinda, of course, you can only, I can only, there's two sides to every story, I get that. I know I have had some phone calls by people that were interested in it, that did not receive even a phone call, and I feel that they should've, if nothing else, just out of respect because they have been involved with the program.
Sure, yeah, I'll give you some more information.
All those in favor of approving the ECA, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Contracted?
Yeah, this is just all the people we contract with for, basically physicians that are very hard to hire your own. It's mostly special ed services, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapy, behavior analysts, things like that. So we contract through companies for their services.
I move to approve the contracted. Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the contracted?
So these contracted, are these new, are these, did we contract these last year?
Yeah.
So from a financial standpoint, it won't have, it's kinda just continuing what we have paid in the past.
Correct.
It's all expected, causes, costs that was put into kind of the.
Yep.
Predicament that we're finding ourselves within too.
Yep.
All those in favor of approving the contracted, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero, and then the substitute.
Yeah, nothing much there other than just thank you to all those people that wanna sub for us, whether it's as bus drivers or in the classroom or wherever.
Have a motion to approve the.
So there was one on substitute?
Substitute recommendation.
So moved.
Mr. Elliott, is there a second?
Where's that at?
It was right.
It's right after. Personnel report.
Right after a thicker bunch of them there for the, yeah, it's just one sheet.
Just paperclip from the back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Read the discussion part on that.
No, we're, uh, second. We need a, I need a.
I'll second it.
Mr. Sears, do we have any discussion?
I do have a question. I'm sorry to have you asking questions. So subs, when, do people apply to be a sub? And are they applying to be a sub in the elementary or the middle school or the high, or are they just applying to be a sub? And then we can put them in any school, they can fill in anywhere. I don't.
It all depends on their preference. They can sign up and tell us they have a preference for one or two buildings or a level. Very often, you don't find anybody that says, I wanna, I wanna sub wherever. Often times, they, they have a preference, like I only wanna do elementary or I only wanna do like middle school, high school, so.
Can I forget, like in the past, we've had a sub shortage, so it's not so much that the list isn't long enough, it's just those on the list, most of them maybe won't wanna sub in middle school.
Yeah.
I'll do elementary or I'll do high school, but I don't.
That's part of the problem, yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion on the substitute? Need to abstain on this one.
I probably should, too, since my dad's on.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, with two abstains. Item number nine, consideration of the student athletic handbook updates.
Yeah, Mr. Regations took some time to look at the handbook and nothing real major, you know, being taken out or anything. Actually, some stuff is some stuff from the IHSA that I think is kind of outdated and no longer, um, no longer needed. No major comments, really. It's just a lot of cleaning up language and taking out stuff that Mr. Regations felt did not need to be in there and kind of making it a little bit more user-friendly.
Do I have a motion to approve the athletic handbook updates?
I'll move to approve the athletic handbook.
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion on those? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item number ten, permission to transfer the Bradford Woods ECA account funds to Student Activities ECA fund at the middle.
Yeah, so this is a, a fund that was set up for exactly what it said there, is to take kids to Bradford Woods, and I believe that trip is not going to be happening this year. I'm not sure about the future. So they thought the best choice was to, um, transfer those funds into the Student Activities Account Fund, which is still gonna go toward things for kids, so. No matter if it's sitting in the Bradford Woods or Student Activities, it's gonna be used for kids, but it looks better from a audit standpoint to have it in Student Activities, if you're not gonna be taking that trip.
So moved.
Mr. Elliott?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion?
They're not doing the Bradford Woods trip. Is that part of the cut, cutback, or I mean, see, my kids always enjoyed it.
No, I'm not.
It's my understanding they haven't done it for a couple of years now, so I don't, I don't know for sure, but.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item eleven, consideration of the contract with the school care.
Yeah, so we already use school care for nursing in the respect of that's who the, that's the platform the nurse uses to put in when kids come. So the kid visits, she puts name in, kind of what the issue was and that sort of thing, so it keeps record of that. Uh, we're asking you to consider letting us use school care also because we can do billing through Medicare. So let's say a kid comes through the clinic, and let's just say for diabetic purposes. We can actually bill Medicaid for the services we provide. School care basically gets a cut of whatever we get. I think they get forty cents out of every, I think it was dollar something that, that we get. We do the same thing with special ed services. We bill Medicaid for services we can provide through our own special ed services, like OT, PT, things like that. So this just allows us to enter into contract and bill Medicaid for certain nursing services, and it'll bring in a little bit of revenue.
So it's kinda like they don't get paid if we don't?
Correct, yeah, we, we don't bring anything, they get nothing.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract with the school care?
I'll move to approve the contract.
Mr. Sears, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, is there any further discussion?
Does this have any impact on what, like the parent would have to pay? Like, I mean, it's not like, is there a co-pay on this stuff?
No.
We're gonna all of a sudden get a bill?
Nope.
Okay.
They're not, doesn't affect the parents at all.
Okay. Is this something we could've been doing in years past, or is this something new?
We could, definitely could've been doing, but I'll be honest with you, um, it's, the, the nursing side of it is, is even new to me. I knew about the special ed stuff because you can really bring in a decent amount of money there, but the nursing is new to me, so, yeah.
Good deal.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the school care contract, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item twelve, permission to dispose and sell up some, uh, ham radio.
Yeah, so as we were, um, looking at servicing our own radios that we have in the buildings for security and that sort of thing, Scott Hamilton was, was leading that up, our director of safety. The, the middle school came across some, some ham radios that we definitely don't need and need to either be disposed of, or I don't know if there's anybody out there that still does projects with ham radios and stuff. If, if, if that's the case, tell them to call us up. Um, but yeah, we, we need to get rid of that stuff.
I have a motion to approve getting rid of the old radio equipment. Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Elliott, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes five to zero. Item thirteen, permission to dispose of appliance equipment.
Yeah, we have some refrigerators that we have replaced in the buildings that need to be disposed of. We've already had some people ask us, you know, hey, can we have those or whatever, and so it's fine with me. We're probably just gonna give them to some people who, who want them. But yeah, they definitely need to be replaced, so asking you to allow us to dispose of those.
I have a motion to approve getting rid of the appliance.
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item fourteen, uh, permission to adopt a new reading curriculum for the middle school.
Yeah, so the new state requirement for a reading plan goes up through eighth grade now. And so, part of that is you also have to show proof that you have adopted a scientifically researched reading curriculum. And that the state has put out which ones, you know, are scientifically researched that you can kinda choose from. So this caused, caught us a little bit by surprise because we weren't aware that this was going up through eighth grade now. So we have no choice but to adopt a reading curriculum. So thanks to Brandy Hyatt at the middle school, she did her research and looked at, talked with teachers and talking with high school teachers on what curriculum might be best that would kind of move well from middle school to high school. And so they chose this one. It does come at a cost of about fifty-two thousand dollars. We are gonna save on some shipping, though. We're gonna go pick them up from Indy, so that'll help a little bit. But yeah, that's the background behind of why we, why we have to do this at this point.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. K, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Elliott, any further discussion on the reading curriculum?
Does that come out of education funding?
Yes, curricular materials.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Permission to replace the water heater at the elementary.
Yeah, this project's actually already done. I let the board know about this when it happened. Our, uh, we have one big water heater at the elementary. It definitely needed replaced. I'm not even gonna go into the, the stuff that was wrong, because you don't wanna hear the long, drawn-out details. But anyway, what we ended up doing is replacing it with two smaller ones. It was one, one really big one, so we replaced it with two smaller ones that we felt was gonna be much more efficient. So, um, we had to get that going because that decided to go bad about a week before school started. So I'm asking your permission to retroactively approve that one.
I have a motion to approve the water heater.
So moved.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item sixteen, consideration of wrestling tournaments.
Yeah, these are trips that the wrestling team takes pretty much every year, so I want to thank Coach Smith for getting these to us ahead of time, so we can get these taken care of and that they have permission to go and take those trips.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the wrestling tournaments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes five to zero. Item seventeen, permission to receive donations to the athletic department.
Yeah, I have some donations here that people are making to the athletic department and we greatly thank them. I'll read those off here. We have Selena Clements, Matthew Monahan, Jody Davis, Brianna Watson, Tammy Everett, Michelle, there wasn't any last name with that one. Class of nineteen ninety-six, Darlene Whitehead Lawson, Matty Wright, Nola Parker Garrison. I want to thank all of those people for their generous donation to the athletic department.
Do I have a motion to approve the donations?
Move to approve the donations?
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Elliott? Any further discussion on that?
I do have one question on this. I mean, I think most of these donations, if not all of them, came out of the, the email post or the Facebook post about the participation fee, the seventy-dollar participation fee. And I know people ask if they can help with that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think all these donations, people donated with that expectation.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
Will that money be earmarked specifically for that or do we know, and if we don't have an answer tonight, I'm okay with that. I feel like, you know, that's what we raise the money for. I figure we need to probably figure out how to make sure it kind of directionally goes that way.
Yeah, let me ask that question for you.
And again, I don't necessarily need to follow up, it's just, you know, my expectation would be, if we raise it that way, it should be used that way.
Okay.
And I could be wrong on all of that.
No problem.
All those in favor of approving the donations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item eighteen, permission to sell buses to favorite cars.
Yeah, so the buses that we bought last year are going to be coming in here pretty quick, so we're ready to sell some buses that we no longer need. And that will make room in our transportation for those new buses. We had a really good success last time selling them at auction. Typically, we were only going to get about twenty-seven hundred for trading them in. The least amount we got on a bus that was auctioned off was forty-two hundred, and I think we got six thousand or more for at least one or two of them, right? There you go. So, I'm recommending we do the same thing with four more buses.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion on selling the buses? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five to zero. Item nineteen is another.
Yeah, I've got a few things here. Number one, want to thank everybody in our school corporation for a good start to the school year. It takes all kinds of people and departments to, to get this school ready to go back and the kids here and everything, so truly thank, thanking everybody. That's teachers, maintenance, custodial, central office, you name it, everybody who had a hand in getting the schools ready to, for the kids to come back, so thank you for that. One quick thing about the budget, obviously, we talked about budget a little bit last time because we approved the budget calendar, so we are in budget season here. We'll probably advertise the budget in the next week or so, two weeks at the most. You'll be able to go on Gateway and find that advertised budget. CPF Plan and Bus Replacement Plan will be on the website. The next meeting is when we will have a hearing on the budget, so we'll talk more about what the tax rate is and what the amount of levy that we think we're going to bring in and that sort of thing. So, I want to let everybody know that's coming up. Roof project out of previous bond funds is probably going to start here in September. They've already been here once to help us with a leak that couldn't wait till September and thanking them for, for doing that because that was a, a big leak we had. And we got a lot of rain right before school started, so they were nice enough to come and get that taken care of before they officially started in September. So, that's coming up here. LED lighting project, we're not quite finished with that. They're still doing some odds and ends, some areas we found that they didn't hit inside the building. They haven't touched the athletic fields yet. They had an issue with getting some of the mounting equipment that they needed, so some of that stuff was on back order. But they say that that should be coming in pretty soon and they'll get going on those fields. Obviously, there's not going to be any interruption to any of our sporting events, they're going to work around that stuff, so that's coming up. The only other discussion I want to kind of have with the board and get your opinion on where to move is on property. I kind of, kind of talked to you about that via the update I sent to you guys. We still have some people out there that are inquisitive on, on if we want to purchase property from them and that sort of thing. And then even a, a brand-new thing that came down the pike here, here recently. So, let's talk about a couple of new ones that popped up. Linda McFarland, who owns, it's four-point-zero-eight acres, it's basically the, the land that the Little League baseball fields sit on. She actually contacted us about donating that land to us, but she wanted a stipulation that it had to always be used for baseball. So, obviously, wanted to throw that out there, not to have to make any decisions, but just wanted you to be aware of that and we can, you know, you can discuss it now or, or think about it and we can discuss it again at a, at a later time. But Steve, is there anything else you want to add that kind of, that contacted you?
She, she was adamant that she wanted it to be used forever as a baseball ground. And so, something would have to be put on the deed, a stipulation, and that would be permanent. So, we owned it, we would own it, but we wouldn't be able to do anything else, else with it other than have it used as a baseball field.
What would be the, would we carry the liability then?
No, right now, it's, I mean, there's a lease that she has with the baseball, I got their name here, they lease it and they maintain it and they carry insurance. And they have an indemnity agreement, so if anyone is injured, they're responsible for it. It's the Monrovia Organized Baseball, Inc. They just have a lease for a dollar a year. Actually, her written lease ran out. She said they're operating the same one they've had for several years. So, they maintain it and they mow it, keep it up, lights, whatever needs to be done.
I wonder why they would just donate it down. I wonder why they wouldn't donate it just to baseball.
Right. Yeah, I agree, that's, that's my only consideration.
I don't think their heart is necessarily set on donating it to the school if we don't want to. She used to be an employee here for several years, and that was her first thought. But I think that if we decide not to accept it, she'll probably donate it to maybe the baseball corporation, I would assume.
I would say might be.
She's paying real estate taxes, I think it's, she didn't mention that, but she is.
So, it has to be used for a baseball, but I, I wonder if, say, we got adjoining ground to it, could you, could we do like a land swap of some sort? Or it has to be like physically that area has to stay the baseball?
It would have to be.
I mean, I understand why she wants to do it, I mean, it's been done forever, so.
I know too, just to kind of clear this up, like, I was on that board for years, the bank owns Diamond One, which is the diamond up there
Right.
the concession stand, so it's really the stuff of this way.
Right.
It's not even the whole thing.
I think there are three diamonds.
Yeah, there's three diamonds.
Yeah.
I thought I heard that they recently, the, the bank donated that to them or they purchased it?
It could be, I don't know, but I, it's not part of this, I guess, is what my
It's not part of this, right.
It would be part of what Mrs. McFarland
Yeah, that's what we understand too, yeah.
Yeah, or we can accept it and donate it to them, I mean, whatever. I think ultimately, it needs to be with the Little League.
Yeah.
My gut is a no, and I only say that, it seems like there's a lot of risk and no upside. I mean, we'd be picking up a tax bill that we don't have to pay now. I mean, I love the baseball league, but it's probably best to keep it with the baseball league, in my opinion.
Sure.
Especially if you're locked in for life on, on the use.
Well, what if it's deep, yes, we wouldn't pay taxes.
Oh, right, because, so we'd still be locked in with
Yeah.
the use. If they decided they couldn't pay for the mowing and things like that.
Right.
We would kind of be stuck with that, and I, I don't know that we want to take on Little League running, so, my two cents.
I think more coaches are higher than anybody.
I guess.
Great.
The other one I alerted you to was Sam Schaefer, he owns the building there that's a laundromat, or he's going to turn it into a laundromat. I walked through the building, he's got it, I mean, it's not, I would say it's gutted, it's not down to like studs or anything, it's still all the, all the drywall is still there. There's some areas that he's kind of gutted to make room for, obviously washing machines and dryers and stuff like that. He kind of came out of nowhere, he just called me this, this summer and asked if we'd be interested, and so I went and took, took a look at it. I mean, it could be some possible uses there, but I'm also not gung-ho that we have to do it either.
Does any of that ground around it go with it?
I think there's some
That goes straight back?
Straight back, yeah, goes with it, yeah. Not sure how much.
I'm all about what, what's it cost, right? I mean, like, it's adjacent to our property, I would probably pursue it and see what it is, but, you know. I mean, I don't have any idea what that piece of property would be worth.
Yeah, I don't either.
That's just my two cents, so.
Could always have it appraised, what we've been doing.
I mean, the appraisal isn't that expensive, right? I think the last ones were under two thousand dollars for the
The commercial, sorry, it's twenty-five hundred each.
Twenty-five hundred each.
For the commercial appraisers, the residential appraiser would be about three hundred, three fifty.
Yeah, and we can, we can pay for appraisals out of bond funds. So, if you want to take that step, we can, we can do that if you wish.
I mean, unless we can get the same thing like we tried with the other piece of property, if we can get a feel of what they're asking or what their expectation is, right, before we do appraisals.
Okay.
That would even be better, right?
Yeah, I can contact him.
Obviously, there's numbers that we wouldn't, would be interested
Yeah.
some that we might.
I'll give him a call, see what he's thinking.
Just to kind of get a feel for it before we actually spend any money, might be.
Yep.
Are you thinking to tear the building down or are you thinking to redo the building?
I think it
We'd have a lot of cost to put in, I mean.
Right, I think a lot of it would depend on the, the
On its own?
What's that?
Is it completely on its own?
Yes, yes.
It used to be the law office.
Yeah. I think it depends on the condition of it, you know, obviously have it, have it inspected and that sort of thing. I mean, if it's decent, I think there's some possible uses for it.
After you remodel it though?
Correct, yeah, it'd need, it'd need remodeling, absolutely.
So, he's not going to put a laundromat?
He, he, if he, he says if he can get it sold, he'd rather do that. If he's, he says if they can't get it sold, he's going to continue and make it into a laundromat.
I think it was a laundromat at one point in time, at one time.
There was some sewer issues with the way he was wanting to, could be a lot of money for the
I think this is the same individual that bought the property in the curve right across from Tammy Everett's business. And they built, and parking was an issue, so I, I'm pretty sure it's the same individual, so.
Well, I will give him a call. And the last one is one we've, we've kind of been talking about a little bit, that's the Grindin property. Where we are now, we've left it, and I've emailed with her now, it was less than a month ago, but we're still at, she knows that we would not be able to make an offer even if we wanted to until the new bond money came, because we've kind of already have the bond money right now spoken for in different projects and stuff. She said they're open to that, but obviously, there needed to be something worked out to where, you know, could they stay on the property for a certain amount of time till they found a new property, stuff like that. She would want to know that we were seriously going to make an offer before they would, you know, want to entertain us not making anything until after the first of the year, that sort of thing. I still, I still think the question there, though, is about that back part of the property and whether it is truly how wet it gets and that sort of thing. Schmidt Associates, when we were talking about the facility study, talked about how they could probably have an engineer look at that back there if we wanted to, so that's another option too, so.
What would be a possibility, either a work session scheduled where we could walk the property, see the insides?
Yeah, I can definitely
She'd be willing to do that, so we could see what we could possibly, how we could use it. Because I know that she has an office connected to the residential part.
Okay.
I'd be interested to see what the engineer said, I mean, if it's wet land, if it's flood plain, is there anything we can do with it?
Right.
I would also rather have that kind of information before we go over and look at it.
Okay.
I agree with that, I think that's the key to the whole thing.
Yeah, because if the county says it's flooded, so
Well, I'll do this, I will, I will contact Diane about possibly walking the property, seeing the, seeing the house, that sort of thing. I'll get in touch with Schmidt Associates about them checking out that back portion. Yeah, go from there. And it's one thing I forgot to put on here, so speaking about the facility study, they are hoping to have facility study wrapped up end of this month and be here for the September board meeting to kind of talk to you guys about that and maybe make a presentation. I don't think they're going to probably hit every single thing because it's a lot to go over, some of it, we're going to have to just kind of look at it ourself. But it'll at least give us a good, good idea of what they've done and what some of their suggestions would be, so that's the, that's the progress with the facility study too. With that, I think I've hit on everything I had.
All right, item number twenty is final public comments. Do we have any final public comments? Then I just need a vote for adjournment.
Some of us
Second.
Mr. Sears, Mr. Elliott, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five, zero, seven, seventeen.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.